Our Board of Education meeting is called to order. If you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. Secretary Johnson, if you would, please take the roll call.
All members are here except for Member Pigott.
Very good. Colleagues, moving on now to the approval of tonight's agenda. I have two amendments. Unless there are any objections, the agenda will be approved with two amendments. Information Item B relative to the Mason Athletic Field Improvements will be removed from the agenda and will be brought forth before the Board in February. And secondly, moving our highly anticipated holiday performance to earlier in our agenda after public comments on action items. Very good. Thank you, colleagues. Okay. We will now move on to public comments on action items. We will now take public comments on action items. Is there anyone who would like to address the Board on an item that we are voting on this evening? Scott, we didn't have any green cards coming over there, did we? Excellent. Excellent. All right. Oh, and I'm sorry, colleagues. Moving the holiday performance to after our consent agenda. Okay. Colleagues, moving on now to our consent agenda. Unless there are objections, tonight's consent agenda will be approved as presented. All right. Excellent. We're now going to hand it over to our wonderful Harmonia, and we're going to go take a seat. So, welcome. Thank you for being here, and come on up.
Okay. Are you ready? I'm gonna just scooch over like a tiny bit. Okay. Should I talk? I don't get it.
All right. One, two, three.
(singing) To the children of the land, nothing new to say. Remember Christ our Savior was born on a Christmas day. To save us all through saints and saviors, we were promised to. Oh, joy in the Lord, God of joy, God of joy. Oh, joy in the Lord, God of joy, God of joy. Oh, where are you, my love, my sweet darling? And unto thee, my friend, thy wings of the sea. To thee, my love, my sweet darling, my love. Oh, joy in the Lord, God of joy, God of joy. Oh, joy in the Lord, God of joy, God of joy.
I don't have it. I don't have it. Okay, here we go. One, two, ready, go. Oh, no, sorry. There we go. No, you're fine. All right, here we go. One, two, ready, go.
(singing) The Lord is come, and the earth will see. Let every heart prepare in prayer, and heaven, nature, see. Let heaven, nature, see. And the Lord, and heaven, nature, see. Joy to the earth, the same earth, the land, that's home tonight. Where fields and boughs, forests and boughs, we give us something joy. We give us something joy. We give, we give, we give us something joy. We use love, which you have grace, and grace, and we shall do. Love is a, 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 is a. (singing) Dashing through the snow, in one horse open sleigh. O'er the fields we go, laughing all the way. Bells on bobtails ring, making spirits bright. What fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Jingle, jingle, jingle bells, jingle bells. Jingle, jingle, jingle bells. Oh, what fun it is to ride, oh, what fun it is to ride. In a one-horse open sleigh, a one-horse open sleigh. Jingle, jingle, jingle bells, jingle bells. Oh, what fun it is to ride, oh, what fun it is to ride. In a one-horse open sleigh, a one-horse open sleigh. Jingle, jingle, jingle bells, jingle bells. Jingle all the way. What fun it is, what fun it is to ride, oh, what fun, oh, what fun it is to ride. In a one-horse open sleigh. Jingle, jingle, jingle bells, jingle bells. Jingle bells, jingle all the way. What fun it is, what fun it is to ride, a one-horse open sleigh! Tonight, jingle, jingle. Dashing, dashing, dashing through the snow. In a one-horse open sleigh. O'er the fields we go, o'er the fields we go. Laughing, 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 making, making, laughing all the way. Bells on bobtails ring, making spirits, making spirits bright. Oh, what fun it is to, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Dashing through the snow, in a one-horse open sleigh. O'er the fields we go, laughing all the way. Bells on bobtails ring, making spirits bright.
into play. I know that you spent a lot of time and I'm really grateful to have, you know, new eyes, fresh eyes, new perspective on this. And I just wanted to thank you all for your tremendous work in bringing this forward to us tonight.
Thank you, Members Sutherland. Other comments or questions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries 6-0. Thank you so much. Okay, Treasurer Sutherland.
Thank you. Superintendent's Recommendation 45-22-23: Childcare Rates for 2023-2024. Administration is recommending that the Board approve the hourly rates for childcare beginning with the summer of 2023. The rate for school-aged childcare, SACC, per hour is recommended to be $5. The rate for preschool childcare per hour is recommended to be $7. The current rate for both is $4.40 per hour, and I so move.
Support.
Thank you, colleagues. The motion on childcare rates has been moved and supported. Comments or questions? Yes, Member Sutherland.
Just a thank you again. I know that we've done a lot of due diligence in this study to make sure that we were benchmarking ourselves, to make sure that we were looking out for our families, to ensure that, you know, we were providing the very best service, given the changing structures that we have in place. So I just, again, I know that was a lot of work and just want to thank you all for the time and effort that went into this.
Yeah, I'll just second Member Sutherland's comments. That conversation we had at that Cow meeting, I think, was just robust. We all learned together. We came in with a proposal. That was, it was a great presentation. I think colleagues have great, I just, I just think it was a great process. So I just wanted to say thank you as well. Okay, colleagues, any other comments, questions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries 6-0. Treasurer Sutherland.
Superintendent's Recommendation 46-22-23: Bond Authorizing Resolution. It is recommended that the Board approve the attached resolution which provides for the authorization by the Board of Education for the issuance of School District Bonds Series 2023 for the 2020 Bonds Series 2 not to exceed $70 million. I so move.
Support.
Support.
Thank you. The motion for the authorization of Series 2 2020 bond has been moved and supported. Comments or questions? Yes, Member Petrusia.
Could you read that number again?
It's a very big number, isn't it?
Seventy million. Wow, okay.
Yes, Member Sutherland.
And to that point, first of all, thank you to our community, our tremendous community, who supported this bond and for making these funds available. A significant portion of this is to be utilized for our new state-of-the-art, just a real gem of a learning facility for our early childhood education, our new Stapansky Center. So we thank the community for this tremendous opportunity that this gives to Waterford and to all of the families that send their children here. And we're so excited what this means. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions, colleagues? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries 6-0. Treasurer Sutherland.
Recommendation 47-22-23: Revised School Code Section 1352 Resolution. It is recommended that the Board approve the attached resolution enabling the Waterford School District to comply with the provisions of Section 1352 of the Revised School Code with respect to contracting for legal representation by a law firm for the school district's issuance of the school district bond. Dickinson Wright is Waterford School District's legal counsel for this bond issuance and works in conjunction with the district's capital bond advisor, Stephen Burke of MFCI. I so move.
Support.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Are there comments or questions? Very good. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries 6-0. Treasurer Sutherland.
Superintendent's Recommendation 48-22-23: Technology, T2 Audiovisual. The administration is recommending awarding the T2 audiovisual to Inacomp Technical Group LLC for the classroom audiovisual in the amount of $2,714,791.06 and to advanced lighting and sound for the gym multipurpose audiovisual in the amount of $418,941 for a total award of $3,133,732.06. As part of the bond approved by the voters on August 4th of 2020, the purchase and installation of audiovisual systems district-wide, including interactive whiteboards and audiovisual systems within some of our gyms and multipurpose rooms, was included. Installation of this work is anticipated to begin during the spring, summer of 2023. The funding source for this is the 2020 Bonds Series 1, and I so move.
Support.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Other comments or questions? Member Wagner.
I just want to say that you don't have to get up. I just wanted to say thank you so much for sending us the information. I am incredibly excited for what this is going to do for our classrooms and our staff, our students, our teachers. It's just another step that we're taking to move forward in our investments in curriculum. So, thank you so much for all the work on that. And thank you for sending us the information. It was very exciting to see the tutorials. So, thank you.
Colleagues, other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries 6-0.
Welcome to the 21st century, Waterford. Yes.
I like chalkboards.
All right, Treasurer Sutherland.
Yes, Superintendent's Recommendation 49-22-23: Teacher workstation. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the purchase of 800 devices from Presidio in the total amount of $886,400 under the REMC bid contract. Funding is the 2020 Bonds Series 1, and I so move.
Support.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Colleagues, any comments or questions regarding teacher workstations?
I will again say, great job. I know that this is needed. I'm certain some of our computers still have floppy disks in them. And so, I know the teachers are going to be really excited and this is, it's a great thing. So, glad we were able to do it.
Just on that, again, just to always reiterate, just the sort of monumental investments we've made in curriculum, professional development, and making sure that our staff and wonderful teachers have the things they need to see these things through. So, thank you, thank you.
All right, colleagues, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Excellent. Thank you. Motion carries 6-0. Treasurer Sutherland.
Superintendent's Recommendation 50-22-23: Kettering Site Improvements. The administration is recommending awarding the Kettering High School site improvements to MHM Construction LLC for the electrical work in the amount of $347,317.03 and to Asphalt Specialists Incorporated for the site work in the amount of $3,440,000 for a total award of $3,787,317.03. The funding source is the 2020 Bonds Series 1, and I so move.
Support.
Thank you, colleagues. The motion for Kettering site improvements has been moved and supported. Any comments or questions? Let's do Member Hemospa and then Member Petrusia, please.
Not that it hasn't been obvious, but clearly there are bond issues and this could not happen unless our community supported us by as plain as an asphalt service to high-tech in our classrooms. And we couldn't do without our voters approving our bond issues. Appreciate that.
Member Petrusia.
The one that we're giving the award, have we worked with them in the past?
Yes, we have. We have worked with them. We've been very happy with their work.
I thought we'd had that conversation. I just wanted to make sure that, because I usually ask that that somebody knew where somebody we're unhappy with.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, colleagues? Okay, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Excellent. The motion carries 6-0. Okay, moving on now to President's Recommendation. Recommendation 51-22-23: Relative to Superintendent Evaluation Rating. Colleagues, I move that the Board of Education approve the 2020 evaluation rating of effective for Superintendent Lindberg. I so move.
Support.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, we've been moved and supported. The motion has been moved and supported. Comments or questions? Member Petrusia, please, first.
And again, we, the tool we use, and again, it's the whole process, there's only like, you know, two or three things that we can't, we can give them. We can't give them a, you know, it isn't an A through E or anything like that, or a B+. We give them, it sounds like a C, but it's above that. But we have, we have room for improvement, so we can't give them the top one. We don't have that one that's in between, and we don't want to pump them up too much because we want them to be hungry and keep, you know, striving for that.
I agree.
But again, I think he does better than basic, without a doubt. But there's room for improvement before we get the, you know, the outstanding ones. I just wanted to thank you for doing that, putting up with us, and, you know, continue on.
Thank you, Member Petrusia. Member Jocelyn, do you have a comment?
I just want to say, you know, I agree with Rob. Sometimes Rob and I don't agree, but I do agree. Thank you for sticking with us. I mean, this is, you've been, you came in a rough patch, you know? You came in in July and a bunch of stuff going on, and then we had COVID, and then surprise bond issue. And, you know what, you've stuck it out and you're always onward and upward. And, you know, even sometimes when I myself am like, oh my gosh, can we do this? You're like, we're going to do it. And we do it. So, I think you're doing a fantastic job.
We have a great team down here.
We really do.
Want to make sure that the team here, because I can't do anything without this team and their support.
What we hire and fire you mapped out.
I know.
Member Sutherland.
I just wanted to also let the listening public know that, like our staff members, all of our staff members, there is a robust rubric that is involved in the evaluation process. And so, like our staff members, his evaluation is tied to that rubric and to the same goals and objectives of the school district. So, I have immense respect for the fidelity of this process, for the board members, and all of the work that board members went into, and most especially to you, Superintendent Lindberg, for the hard work that you do every day, you and your staff, to ensure that our district is moving forward and, you know, onward and upward in all things. So, really appreciate the hard work and looking forward to even more progress as we move forward.
I'll just add, thank you, Scott. I think the district's in great hands. And I just want to echo Jones that superintendent staff evaluations have come a long way, a long way. They're built to hold people accountable. They're designed to improve people. And they're also designed to reward people. So, thank you, Scott. Appreciate the work.
And just to echo Members Sutherland's comments, part of what we have to do, we get together in the early beginning of the year, January, February, we sit down with the superintendent, we take out the instrument that we use to evaluate superintendent, we set some goals, we look at the menu of sort of goals and the criteria. We have conversations, we check in quarterly. Superintendent Lindberg brings us updates throughout the process. So when it gets to the end of the year, we've set goals, we've supported goals, and we're making progress towards goals. So, again, thanks to Superintendent Lindberg and to the, as Jones said, to all of our board colleagues here for sticking to the process because that transparency, those conversations, it helps.
Okay, colleagues, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Excellent. Motion carries 6-0. So, colleagues, we're now on to public comments on non-action items. Is there anyone who'd like to address the Board this evening on non-action items? Okay, excellent. Thank you, everyone. Colleagues, moving on now to our Board of Education reports. Are there any reports this evening? Member Petrusia.
It's that time of year, Christmas, you know, love and all these wonderful things. And it is something. I mean, it is the holidays. It's special. Give thanks to, you know, what we have, people around us, and the ones that have passed this past year, especially Heather. Just, don't take for granted. It isn't about, you know, well, I like this person, don't like that. It doesn't matter. We, as a group, work together for the better people. We don't always agree because our, we have different beliefs or, you know, but I feel that everyone up here does what they do because they believe in it. And that's all I can ask, you know, for the last few years. I'm going to be missing John. I'm going to be going back to the old person on the Board again. I really liked having somebody else that was older and wiser. And I'm going to truly miss that. I said nice things last time you left. I can't remember what they were, but I'm sure they were nice.
They were. Thank you.
And again, but you're a good man. Your wife and your daughter seem to like you. So I mean, you're a good husband and a good father. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a good thing. And I appreciate having you on here, being patient with me over the years. And your knowledge will be missed.
Thank you.
That's all. Merry Christmas.
Member Sutherland.
I think we're going to do a presentation, so I'm going to hold my comments relative to our colleague, Mr. Hemospa.
I didn't get the memo.
No, no, so sorry. I just happened to be looking at it. I do want to thank this community. I've had an opportunity to see a lot of different communities in action, and especially at Christmas time, but honestly, throughout the entire year, we have teachers and principals and staff members and paras and childcare workers and so, so, so many students and families who are out in the community doing wonderful things for others. This particular time of year gives us pause and allows us to be so grateful for the community that we live in, for the kind of people that we, that we share our day-to-day lives with, and for the difference that they're making in the lives of those that we are in community with. And so, I just, I've seen, you know, concerts and donation programs and different challenges that have gone on, and so many giving events, dinners for seniors, dinners for vets, dinners for low income. It has been an absolutely heartwarming and wonderful thing to behold. And I think we all need to just step back sometimes and just give a debt of gratitude to the goodness in our community. So, that is what I wanted to do during this holiday season, and also wish everyone a safe and wonderful holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Member Wagner.
Hi. Oh, my voice just went. I just wanted to say, I had the opportunity last night to attend Mott's Holiday Concert. I was also at Pierce's Holiday Concert this week. It was wonderful to hear the singers tonight. Our performers did a great job last night. I hope that if you aren't ever able to attend any of the concerts that you try and do this next year, it is phenomenal. You saw a piece of it tonight. Also, a little shout out to Mrs. Laird, who is a Waterford Mott graduate herself, leading the Waterford Kettering Choir. So, it just, it was really heartwarming to see all the families out the last, this entire week at the concerts and performances. And I also heard that Mason had a fabulous concert as well, and saw all the pictures that people posted today of Kettering at our senior center today, performing. So, and I know that the Waterford Mott Jazz Band performed here for the tree lighting. So, it's just, if you ever have a chance or an opportunity, and there's some great opportunities coming up in January and February to see our performing arts, there is Cinderella, I believe, being performed at Mott, and The Little Mermaid at Kettering. So, it's another great way to see our performing arts kids. So, I just wanted to say, if you have a chance, go out and support them. And Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone out there. Happy holidays for everyone who's celebrating Hanukkah or all other holidays. We appreciate all of you. We appreciate our families and our, and our community, as Members Sutherland said. That was all.
Member Jocelyn, got anything?
No. It was a holiday.
I do, I got to pass.
Yes, Member Hemospa.
I just want to wish every staff person a Merry Christmas. It is still a very tough time to be an educator and a teacher in any district. Our teachers do a phenomenal job. We have phenomenal staff that support that role of teachers in the classroom. So, just Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Enjoy the holidays. Take your two weeks to regenerate and have a safe and happy holiday.
So I'm going to come down here so I can see these guys here.
Hello, colleagues. Hello, everyone. So, we have two plaques here this evening for service to our Waterford School District Board of Education. First, I have one here for Mr. Bob Piggott, who is wrapping up their second stint on the Board of Education, although Mr. Piggott hasn't been able to be here in a long while. We still did want to recognize him for his service. So, I'll just sort of briefly show this to the camera. Thank you, Bob. We will make sure that gets to Mr. Piggott, and thank you for his service on the Board. We also want to make sure we recognize a stalwart on this Board, a model, Boards person, someone who, who I think all of us sort of look up to and find comfort in knowing that he's been on the Board both these last two years, when we've made such monumental, monumental investments in our students, in our district, when we've done really significant work as a Board for making sure that we can be effective. We can be effective. And I think that we've had no better model for what an effective Boards person is than Mr. John Hemospa. Someone who asks questions, who listens, who understands that the name of the game is teaching and learning and improving student performance. And I just think that I certainly owe you a debt of gratitude for being such a good mentor and resource. I know that our community owes you a gratitude. And so, as a small gesture, we have, we have a plaque. Again, a small gesture, but before we make you come up here and shake some hands and get a photo, I want to make sure I give my, our colleagues an opportunity to say anything they might want to say.
Well, John, I'm, I'm going to get all teared up because when I first started on this Board, first of all, you met with me actually right after I'd been elected, before I was even sworn in. And then we started going through some really, really difficult cuts. And I was thinking about all of the chapters that we went through, and it was so traumatic to be thrown into a situation where whatever you did, it was devastating. And it was cutting to the bone, and it was just sleepless nights and no good answers. And, and just in a time when we had no funding from the state to do the kinds of things that we knew we needed to do but couldn't. And you were, you were always the steady voice. You were always the voice of, we, this is what we need to do. We can do this. Let's, you know, how do we minimize the, what's happening in the four walls of the classroom? How do we hold student learning at its highest level that we possibly can? You were the voice of reason through so many difficult and challenging chapters for us. And I am incredibly grateful to have had the privilege to have served with you. I have learned so much, not just as a Board member, but as a human being. And our district is so much better for your 28 years of service. We will be forever indebted to you for that service as a steward, in the truest sense of the word, a steward of this community, of these schools. And we, your contributions will continue long into the future for all the work that you have done. And so, "thank you" is woefully inadequate, but without any other words to, to actually express my gratitude and our gratitude, we say thank you for your years of service to our community.
Colleagues, anyone else?
It's always so hard to follow Joan, especially when your voice is going. But everything that Joan said, John, you have been an amazing mentor. It has been my privilege only to have been able to serve with you for two years, but to have known you throughout more than that, and to see your leadership and your kindness, and like Joan said, the voice of reason and your knowledge. We are very, very grateful and lucky to have you and to have had you for the past 28 years, which in itself is such an amazing, amazing feat. And it just shows your dedication to this community and to our school district. And I am going to miss not having you up here with us and knowing that you are someone that we can turn to. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think if there's one sort of criteria we can use to maybe evaluate our sort of contribution to this Board, but to the community more broadly, is, is it in better shape when we leave than when we got it? I think especially over these last two years, but certainly over 28 years. Second longest, second longest-serving Board member. You've certainly, you've met that criteria. So, thank you so much. And I think we should give Mr. Hemospa a little round of applause.
John, you want to come down here and?
I didn't write anything down this time, but I think about Mike Ristich was maybe leaving elementary school when I got on the school board. But I'm humbled that the community, for 28 years, put their trust in me. I humbly enjoyed thoroughly, really the 28 years, good and bad. Educators and the people around them are wonderful people. And everyone knows, my family's closely tied to this district. So, I'm not going too far. But thank you.
And we're lucky for that.
Thank you, John. Thank you, colleagues. Let's now turn it over to Superintendent Lindberg for our Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you, President Ristich. You know, I was thinking in the last few days, all the good work that we have done in the last two, two and a half years, but three and a half years that I've been here. We have passed $150 million bond issue, which we spoke about tonight. We've renewed our millage for 12, for 10 years, worth 10 or $12 million a year. We have moved to a one-to-one initiative. We have invested well over $3 million in curriculum. We navigated and led through a 100-year pandemic. We have a five-year strategic plan. We had a highly successful security audit. We know safety and security of our students and staff is number one. And we've aligned our middle schools and so much more. But our crown jewel that I want to show the community a video tonight is of our new Early Childhood Center and our topping off ceremony.
Center will be built. So much has happened since we were here last for the groundbreaking ceremony in April. We have reached a major milestone in the build. The structural steel has been completed, and it is time to celebrate this accomplishment together. Today, we are hosting what is known in the construction industry as a topping out ceremony, which celebrates a safe construction site. The tree on this beam signifies good fortune for the rest of the project and for future occupants of this building. And of course, we just signed the beam as a symbol of all those who helped make this amazing project possible. Now, VNA Steel is our steel contractor for this project, and they have been in the industry 50 years. So, we thank them for the amazing work that they have done here. Couple of fun facts that got us to this point. A 12-person crew conducted the install, working over 3,000 hours to ensure completion. The project took 45 days to finish, and just under 1,000 beams have been installed. Again, tremendous work by this crew, and we are so grateful everything went smoothly and safely. Now, I think it's time to raise that beam. I do believe that the future is indeed bright for the Waterford School District because of the work we do together. We ask the tough questions, but we're moving the district forward in every way possible. And I'm proud to be your Superintendent. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Superintendent Lindberg. Colleagues, I think that's a fitting way to end tonight's, end to end this year. So, colleagues, no further business tonight. Tonight's meeting is adjourned. Happy holidays, everyone.